He waited for you, don't worry.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, he did, yeah. Looked like he got to wake them up. Ready, buddy?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the free and republican republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a special meeting of the Board of Education to receive the report from Dr. William Silkey on the Swimming Pool Committee. Mr. Leone is maybe someplace in transit. We're not sure where he is yet. But we thank you again. Thank you all for coming, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Silkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chuska. I'll send it to the computer in a few minutes, but let me start out by saying I'm delighted to be here this evening to present the pool study. A few words of format in terms of how the study was conducted. For some members that don't know who I am, I don't say around the table do. But I worked out and spent eighteen years in my... After that period of time, I went to higher education and was on the trajectory to do some research. Fired from there. Opportunity to go up to Lemoine College and be an administrator. Retired out of there. My wife says I keep failing. Continue to do some consulting that I have done for thirty-five years now. So I'm glad to be here, and that's a little bit about me. Any and the study process itself. Beginning in early January, it had on five occasions. And we had two-hour meetings, and we tried to limit it starting at seven and limited to longer than going past nine. Hearing to that timeframe. The format of the meeting, in an effort to be completely transparent, all the meetings were open to the public. It was like a Board of Education meeting. It was a... As since we asked... On average, we had probably... About an hour and a half or an hour and forty, forty minutes, allowing the observer... At the end of each meeting session, we opened the floor for individuals to ask questions or to make a statement and so forth. And to make sure that the process was as transparent. Following each meeting, there were notes that... On the district website and then... Kind of efforts on the part of the district to get the... Of the meetings themselves. Also say, in relation to the... Had pretty good attendance, as I mentioned, probably thirty people on average. But in addition to... That was there, as was Don and Mike Chuska to... However, they were not on the committee. They were at the pleasure of... Hopefully, you've had a chance to read the report. Better than go through it page by page, because there's a lot of... Like to pick up on... That hopefully led the committee to...
Very wisely, at the outset... Very wisely, at the outset of the study process, you as a Board of Education gave the committee a very specific charge, formed into a question, which I refer to as a critical study question. And this was that question that you asked the committee to address. Specifically, to take a look at options for swimming pool availability to the school district and perhaps the school community, with, of course, related advantages and disadvantages that hopefully would be worthy of your time as a Board of Education to consider. And I would say that at the beginning of each one of our meetings, I put this critical study question up in front of the committee to make sure that we maintained our focus on exactly what you as a Board had asked us to do throughout the study process. So we didn't segue into things that were off task. Before I get into the reviewing the key findings and the recommendations of the committee, I think acknowledgements of individuals that participated in the study process is very important. And I'd like to first and foremost begin by recognizing the members of the Advisory Committee who spent these five nights and time in between and following meetings to work with me along with... To complete the study process. So I would also ask if those members that were on the committee that are here tonight, if you wouldn't mind standing for a minute and accepting the thanks of the Board of Education. As you know, individuals had an opportunity to volunteer for this committee. And while not being a resident in North Syracuse, from the discussions that we had, it seemed like we had a nice representation of a broad spectrum of the community as we engaged in our discussions. In addition to the committee, I owe a special thanks to Annette Speech for all the assistance she provided throughout the study process. And also Marilyn, her able assistant. Marilyn was tremendous in helping me get materials ready for the Advisory Committee meetings and follow-up, including even assisting with getting the final report that you received into a form that was readable. So I want to thank Annette and Marilyn for their help. And of course, Don Keegan. As we got into, you know, financial aspects of the report, Don was very helpful in getting information through me to the committee that would be of use in their deliberations. Other district staff, there were several other people that helped out. And most especially, as you can see, I want to thank Brad Rannieri. Brad put a lot of time, in addition to attending the meetings, doing some research that he shared with the committee. Everything from history of the pool initiative in North Syracuse to other types of information that were shared, and much of which is in the appendix to the report. So I want to thank Brad and other district staff that helped out. We had a couple of meetings where we invited guests in to provide information to the committee as it continued its discussion. I'd first of all like to recognize representatives from King &amp; King Architects. Kirk Narbaugh, in addition to being the CEO currently at King &amp; King, Kirk is also a resident of North Syracuse Schools. He came in along with his associate, Paul Johnston, and presented some sketch drawings of how a pool might be situated in terms of the district buildings, and presented several concepts, as well as some financial estimates of a pool construction, as well as a pool maintenance. So we owe them a great gratitude. I also want to thank from Fiscal Advisors and Marketing, John Shahadi. John, right now, is the chairman of Fiscal Advisors and Marketing. And John came in and shared with the committee some more financial information, as well as, and probably most importantly, some estimates of what the local tax impact would be on residents if a pool is ultimately approved by the community in a capital referendum. And lastly, from my point of view, I want to thank you as a Board of Education. Many of the boards that I work with are like you that have the courage to take on issues like this that can be controversial, for sure. And yet, at the same, are important issues to be addressed by a Board of Education. So I want to congratulate you on your effort to put this study forward and to seek the best advice you can before any decision is made by the Board. So congratulations to you. As we began our deliberations of various options, I instructed the committee that I thought one way to narrow the options would be to think about what options, first of all, might be feasible. In other words, what options are possible that the district might want to consider? And, you know, there could be a number of options that would be feasible or doable and are possible. But the second criterion was, what options are those that are feasible but are also desirable? In other words, with a swimming pool being available to the school and community, it would be desirable if it's educationally sound and financially acceptable to the community. In other words, is it feasible and is it a good idea? So using these criteria, feasibility and desirability, we began our discussions of what options should be considered or at least thrown out on the table for initial consideration. I would also add that early on in the process, I told the committee we needed some means to get to resolution ultimately. And I said with a committee of the size that we had, ideally, we would be able to get to final decisions through a consensus model. In other words, if all of the committee members could at least live with what the committee as a whole is recommending, even if they didn't necessarily personally support that, that would be terrific. On the other hand, if we couldn't get to a consensus model, we would go to voting, and we did have to vote on a couple of occasions. So rest assured that the process, I think, was open. I think it was fair. Everyone had an opportunity to voice their opinion and to vote their conscience, if you will, on at least a couple of issues. At our very first meeting, I charged the committee with brainstorming with no limitations, options that they think could be at least feasible or at least worth exploring. And this was the initial list of options that the committee put forth. I broke the committee up into groups of three and four and said, you know, just start brainstorming. And so, again, these were the options initially we began with. And so let me real quickly kind of run through these. Right now, the pool... A pool is being rented within the Syracuse City School District. So one option is to rent a pool facility, but one that is closer geographically within the school district ideal, or at least in the area. And at that point, we began talking about Midstate Hockey having a grant that not only was for an additional hockey station, but also some money that was earmarked for an aquatics facility. So one option was to rent a pool facility but closer to the district, perhaps, maybe with Midstate Hockey and Twin Rinks. The second option was to build one onto one of the district schools. And we looked at a number of different schools, including all the elementaries. But most importantly, not the elementaries or the middle school, but the junior high and the high school. And we'll get to that in just a few minutes. But we considered that as a feasible option. Collaborate with a local health club. There was a representative and part owner of Aspen Health on the Advisory Committee. And we discussed whether or not working with a local health club, whether it's Aspen or some other health club, because we also had discussions with the Y about perhaps allowing pool access for school district purposes. There was some initial discussion about perhaps collaborating with an adjacent school district to construct a pool that could be shared by two districts. And specifically, Central Square was mentioned, being a neighboring district that did not have a pool. So we threw that out as a possible feasible option. Option E, we later removed as not so much really an option as more or less a comment and a hope that regardless of what option was selected, that hopefully it would be... Provide for year-round aquatics. So we later removed that as an option. The district does own land, as you probably know. There's a couple of parcels of land that the district owns in the northern part of the district. So one option was, rather than attaching it to the school, perhaps build an aquatics facility on district land that it already owns. Option G was working with the community, more specifically, the village in North Syracuse, perhaps one of the three towns, Salina, Cicero, or Clay, that the district lies some portion within. We did have communications with Mayor Butterfield from the village in North Syracuse and also the supervisors of the three towns. There was some interest in at least in discussing it on the part of the village in North Syracuse, as well as the town of Salina, although they did say they already have four pools. So I kind of sensed that there really wasn't a need to get an additional pool. There was not any interest on the part of Cicero. And before we could get an answer from the Town of Clay Board, the committee decided that we would withdraw that request. And we did before the Town of Clay Board met. So at any rate, we did started with this notion that perhaps one of the municipalities might be willing to collaborate with the school district. And then, of course, the last option was really the default option, and that is just continue the current practice. And basically, again, as I've already mentioned, that is having the swim team go to Henninger High School currently in Syracuse City and use their facility for practices, as well as Lemoine College for some events. And that's kind of the default option, remaining as is, and so forth. So that's where we stood in terms of our initial brush of the options that we threw out that might possibly be feasible. I know this is probably somewhat difficult to read, but we began narrowing it down ultimately to two options. Either building a pool within the district, as you can see up here, if you can read that, option one. And that would be either a swimming pool, six- or eight-lane pool at either the junior high or CNS. That was option one. And we began fleshing out some advantages and disadvantages. I'll come back to those in just a second. And option two was working with a local organization, perhaps, as I've mentioned, Twin Rinks, Aspen, or the Y to discuss the possibility of swimming pool access that the organization owns or constructs. So those were the two options that we... Major options that we ultimately came down to. In terms of going back to option one, constructing the pool, as you can see, the committee found many, many more advantages than disadvantages, as listed here. I'm not sure if we need to go through all of these for they're listed in the report in detail. But some of the ones that I think the committee felt quite strongly about were, of course, the pool, if it was in one of the district facilities, either at the junior high or the high school, would be available for phys ed classes, perhaps lifeguarding and CPR for all students. We did survey five area districts. And we asked them, among other questions, did they... Was their pool available to students at other grade levels, other than where the pool was located? We surveyed Liverpool, J.D., West Genesee, and Ballinsville, as well as Syracuse City, but we did not receive a response from Syracuse City. The survey results are contained in one of the appendices to the report. And clearly, several of the districts do make available their pool facilities for physical education classes. So that's not unheard of in terms of school districts. There was a sense that some sports teams could cross-train there. In other words, students that don't necessarily swim but play other sports, and we all know that cross-training's important in most sports. And so a suggestion was that that might be an advantage to allow some cross-training of students that are athletes in other sports other than swimming. I'll jump down the list a little bit. I know you just ran Special Olympics here. I read about that and saw that on the news. There was an advantage, perhaps, could be offering swimming Special Olympics or swimming as part of a Special Olympics program. And along with that, providing an activity for students with all abilities, including those with other abilities. The committee felt that the pool would advantage them as well. There was a sense, once we looked at some of the finances, that it would allow us to perhaps, or you as the district, to perhaps maximize state aid and reduce the burden on the local taxpayers and result in a small additional tax levy for a property owner. When Fiscal Advisors came in, they laid out, as you may have seen in the appendix from their presentation, the impact on a owner of a full value-assessed 100,000-valued home, what the impact would be in terms of annually, in terms of their tax bill. And depending on whether, if it was at the high school, depending on whether it was a six or eight lane, it would range somewheres between $9.41 and $17.81, depending on the range of cost of the capital construction, somewheres between $5 and $10 million once the state aid has been issued. And of course, that tax increase would be, as they projected, people without star. Could possibly host events that would generate income. Also, I know that Brad Rannieri has done some work about what possible income might be generated. It's not contained in the report, but the very last appendix in the report, I think it's Appendix I, does list some possible organizations that certainly could engage in conversations with the district about perhaps renting some space if the district did own a pool. So that's certainly something the committee felt is worth pursuing and could be an advantage for the district. Community access, open swim lessons. All the districts that we did contract do open up their pools to the community during certain times that are not being used by the school. And so it's not unusual that it could be a benefit beyond just the school students themselves, but benefit the community in terms of access to the pool at times that it's available. Perhaps sectionals could be hosted here. And perhaps, related to that, generate some revenue, as well as Upstate Diving, which is based in Rochester, may have some possible interest. And it's certainly worth pursuing discussions with that organizations. Skipping down a little bit, lifeguard certification is something that could be offered to district residents. I know that there's a real need for lifeguards. I heard that again this evening in the area. And so if the district did have a lifeguard certification program, hopefully, there would be more people that would be willing and interested in getting that appropriate certification to not only serve in the district, but also in the town programs. In addition to the swim team's benefiting, perhaps the district, the committee noted, might start its own club team in terms of, you know, youngsters that are not perhaps as competitive but still would like to be part of a swim program, that a club team might be an opportunity to begin. And in looking at the architects' drawings, particularly at the high school, or at the high school, I would say that locker rooms at CNS could be used. And right now, there's quite a bit of travel time. We heard loud and clear about the amount of time youngsters spend on the bus getting to and from Henninger and Lemoine and so forth. So the committee wanted to point out that less travel time and more practice time before and after school would be available if a pool... Oops, if a pool was available within the district. And related to that, perhaps, more kids would try out. Right now, the team, swim team, really doesn't have a quote "home" for spectator convenience. They have to travel to Lemoine. And this would give the team a true home facility that they could use and save and be more convenient for spectators. And it would provide for year-round access, unlike the current arrangement or the default position. And one last comment, although it may, it may not, I don't know. A new pool might encourage prospective homeowners to consider North Syracuse as a district that could provide opportunities for their kids. So these were all advantages that, in brainstorming, the committee came up with. Obviously, as I said, the way outweighed the disadvantages, but there were a couple. Certainly, there's an expense to the school district and the residents to construct a pool versus what they're doing presently. Now, there are expenses to the arrangement the district currently has. For example, the district now spends about $60,000 a year to bus the swim team to the city program and is charged about $23,000 in terms of pool charges. So there is some expense already going outside the district. But clearly, there's a larger expense if the district decides to build its own pool. And of course, that's something that the community would have to approve. And it may not allow for community access. While other districts do provide community access, recently, in light of some of the events that have happened in schools, some districts, most notably, I believe it's Niskiuna in the Capital Area, have decided that they would want to eliminate or certainly reduce community access to their pools. And so that's something that has to be thought about, I think, if you as North Syracuse decide to go forward and discuss community access to a pool. So that was option one. Again, option one is basically build a pool either at the junior high or at the high school in either a six- or an eight-lane pool. Option two, which again was, before we got done, subsequently removed from consideration, was, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, to work with one of the organizations listed here to allow access to a swimming pool that the organization either owns or is willing to construct. And there were advantages and disadvantages that the committee identified with this. And as you can see from this list, the disadvantages that the committee generated were slightly longer than the advantages. I'm not going to go through these. I think you can take a look, and hopefully you've had a chance to look at these. But since the committee decided to ultimately remove this as an option from consideration, I won't spend more time on it right now. I will tell you that, however, we did talk with Cheryl Walker of the North Area Y. And the North Area Y did say that, given the amount that they use its pool, that it probably would not be able to provide times necessary for the school district, when it needed it, to use their pool. But she was willing to check around with some of her colleagues and some of the other Area Ys to see if that might be a possibility. But ultimately, when the committee removed this from consideration, that was dropped. And I would also mention that the representative and part owner from Aspen that was on the committee said, unlike Twin Rinks... committee said, unlike Twin Rinks, they don't have money currently available for a pool, but they would be interested in talking about it. But again, this, since this option was dropped, from committee consideration, we discontinued discussion of that. Would also mention that the King &amp; King presentation laid, laid out a possible timeline for actually having a pool, if the district did go ahead and construct its own pool. And the very earliest, very earliest that a pool could possibly be open to the school district and the community at the very earliest would be the fall of 2021, and more likely it would be later than that, just so, just so you know, in terms of not only all the architectural work that needs to be done, but approval of some state ed and so forth, as well as in-district activities that need to be completed. So going back to the critical question that you as a board asked the committee about the options, the advantages and disadvantages that might be worthy of your consideration. Off of option one, there's really four variants that the committee felt were both feasible and desirable, and would hope that as a board you would consider. And as you can see, obviously, the junior high either hosting a six or eight lane pool, or the, or CNS, the senior high, hosting a either six or eight lane pool. And when it came down to it, the committee felt that these were the options that were not only, as I said, feasible, but most desirable, and would hope you would give serious considerations Near the end of our discussions, I think the second to last meeting, it was suggested by one committee member that perhaps an executive report, or an executive summary, I should say, be included within the report. And a couple of committee members volunteered to draft that for the committee, and you may have seen that in the report at the very beginning. That was written and by a couple of committee members with inputs of other committee members, but endorsed by the entire committee. And essentially, this is what the committee is hopeful that you as a board would consider. That an eight, eight lane, eight lane, 25-yard swimming pool with diving capabilities would go to the high school CNS, so that the existing locker room facilities could be used, as well as utilities, and that it be allowed for, it would permit for maximum educational and community usage. So that's part of the final recommendation that the committee would like to make for board consideration. And I would also add that the committee wanted me to point out, as we were told by John Shahadi from Fiscal Advisors, that if the district were to go ahead with this, this is an excellent time for, probably one of the best times for financing a pool. Borrowing rates are historically low, 3% right now, so that's important to note if the district were to go ahead with this. The committee further went on to, as you can see, with the second bullet point, that with the benefits that we've already reviewed, they're asking that you as a board allow the community to vote on this issue in the near future. And probably most importantly, and wisely, I think in, in my judgment, is not put it up at a time when the school budget is up, to keep it as something that gets the attention and community focus that is necessary for it to be successful, as the committee says. I proposed to the committee three additional recommendations for board consideration, and through a vote of the committee, it was agreed that we would also include this in the report itself. And as you can see, hopefully, that as a board, after tonight, you will study this report and any other related documents in the appendices that the committee has included in the report. And that either the full board, or perhaps a subcommittee of the board, should conduct some type of public hearing on the options under consideration, whether that's part of a regular board meeting, or whether it's a, a special hearing with that specific purpose. You know, that's another recommendation the committee is, would you, ask you to consider. And lastly, that as a board, you select the option you think is in the best interest of the community in the school district, and then ultimately, of course, plan forward, plan to move forward with a specific plan to, to accomplish that. So with that said, there's a lot more, as I've mentioned, in the report itself. If you haven't had a chance to review all the details, specifically some of the appendices, I encourage you to do so. And with that, I'm certainly willing to entertain questions as best I can.
Thank you. Bill, would you go back to that, the last slide with the?
This one, Mike?
Yeah, that one right there. Because that seems to be the charge of the committee back to us as a board of ed, through you is, that those steps are the steps we should take in order to ultimately come to some conclusion about what we can and cannot do.
I think that's what the committee agreed would be a logical progression from this point forward, yeah.
Yeah. Then if you go back one more.
Yep.
Really, the, the construction at the high school, I think clearly is where the committee's coming from, either six or eight or whatever, all that would be cost relative things.
That's correct.
Right. But not for us to go back and rehash the whole thing. The committee did its work. They went through all of this, and they, they're coming to us with, with really that.
They are.
Which I appreciate, so we don't have to go back through this.
Yeah, they are. And I guess it was the committees, through our research, understanding that most districts have a six lane pool. There's some districts that have a four lane pool, and a few have an eight lane pool. I think Victor was used as an example, Suburban Rochester, Eastview Mall, if you know where that is, has an eight lane aquatics facility, but most have a six lane pool, but that's correct.
But in, in terms of studying this, we need, as a board, number one, we need to talk about this over subsequent board meetings. And at those board meetings, we'll be able to get public comment as part of our open sessions as well. But in any case, we need to develop a methodology to go forward. One way, as a board of ed, as to how we're going to pursue this, if and when and how we're going to do it.
Yes, yes. Whether it's according to what the committee would recommend or some other approach, you know, I think the committee is hopeful that the board is going to take this information and do something with it, for sure.
And in order for us to, this is the beginning, this is the surface. We need to get well beneath that surface in terms of costs of, of construction, operating costs, whatever. We, you know, the cost of construction in my other life are escalating daily. We're seeing bids come in very, very high on a lot of things, so we need to look a longer term. And I will mention tonight, you know, we, we have the elephant in the room, it's a $20 million elephant, and we need to look at that as well because we know the community reaction to that. So.
Yeah.
But we're, we're working to resolve that, or at least be able to handle it and control it. But we also need to know, from what we saw prior to the budget vote, the community reaction about that, we need to keep that in mind as well.
Yeah, and in, and in fairness to the committee, I, I want to say that in terms of the district's situation regarding the final cost reports and the $20 million, the committee completed its work before they had any knowledge of that situation.
Before, well, before we knew for sure where we were going with it. You're right.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't want the committee to feel that their time is not well spent and well taken, because this report is very well done, their work is very well done and thought out, and we have an obligation, we charge the committee, we have an obligation to do something with this, to pursue the recommendations that they gave us. And I, I, one way or the other, we will have those discussions in public at subsequent board meetings.
And let me add that, in terms of specifics regarding any type of, whatever the direction the board decides to go, any type of pool construction or capital project, obviously, the committee, working with King &amp; King and with Fiscal Advisors, were dealing with, you know, some broad ranges.
Very broad.
Very broad ranges. And specific details, of course, have to be nailed down architecturally, from an engineering perspective, as well as from a fiscal perspective, that the committee just could not do in the length of time we had, number one, but also, but also with the...
That gives you a three-minute warning or something, I don't know what that is.
Is my time up?
No, not yet.
So clearly, the committee knows there's a, a much more detail than needs to be put on the bones of, of some flesh on the bones here.
And that's time, and that's money that we have to expend in order to do it. Again, those are all part of our discussions that we need to go. But I would ask board members tonight, specific questions for Bill, comments about what's up here, anything, Paul, you know?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. You, you referenced an appendix. Am I missing something? I, I don't have that in this report. I have the slide you just presented. As in the appendix, you referenced some stuff from Fiscal Advisors, comments on current costs of charges to go to the pool, busing, pool use for right now. Where is that?
Well, there's several appendices in the report. I hope you got the full report.
I got, that's, that's not in this.
That's not, that's not what's here, no. The report came separately.
So, in this, this email I received that was separate, is part of the appendix, is I got an email, Ed Rannieri, came last week, you referenced that.
I referenced that in my oral report just now, that is not contained in the written report. It is not in the appendix, no. No. So that would be helpful for the committee, or the board, rather, to have.
Was that something that Mr. Rannieri provided the committee when he was, because you referenced him as somebody who assisted?
Oh, Brad assisted with a number of things.
There is a separate report with the appendix that Bill's referring to. It is not posted on here.
Not with, not with the meeting, right?
It's not posted on the meeting site. If you didn't get it, we will make sure that you get that.
I, I'm just, somebody, yeah, somebody just direct me to where it is, that's all.
Is that a, a document Brad presented related to, originally?
Just the recent one, yeah.
You referenced it because of historic, the history of the previous votes I referenced in it, as well as some other issues about revenue.
Right.
I had a couple of questions when you...
It's Brad's email from last week.
Right.
That had the additional revenue possibilities.
Oh, okay.
I think you appended that at the very end.
All right, yeah, and I don't think the, I don't recall the committee getting that, but...
No, I don't know if the committee got it or not. I'll, I'll look at it, but he sent that to us, and it becomes an appendix to this.
The history document, very long, I think, right there.
Yeah.
Well, the history document is in the appendix, yes. The revenue, or potential revenues from various organizations is not.
Okay, so just, just a couple of questions, and maybe it's, these aren't for you, just we, you referenced the possibility on one of the advantage, advantages for the six or eight lane at the junior high or CNS. Hosting events like sectionals, current stadium used for sectionals and used for a very large track event, do we generate revenue from that?
I'll let Don, Don would comment on that. There was some, there was some revenue.
You know, I don't know that they're comparable. I haven't studied the pool revenues, but yes, we generate whenever, whenever Section Three runs an event at our facilities, we do generate some amount of revenues from that. We also, you know, incur related costs and whatnot, but yes.
One last question for now, anyway. There was a, a committee, and I'm not putting you on the spot, Mike, but I know you were on it, I just wondered if it was considered. It was a configuration committee years ago that looked at the district configuration or demographics to study what to do with the buildings, and I think a recommendation that came in is to go back to two high schools. Was that at all kicked around in this?
No.
So that's not relevant as to why you decided to go to CNS, not just the high school, because it has locker room facilities already that would work well without modification, it sounds like?
For a number of reasons, the high school probably makes the most sense. We looked at space, excuse me, site space, and it would necessitate taking a couple of tennis courts, could impact parking to some degree, but when we looked at the, particularly the junior high, for that reason, plus the fact that the locker rooms at the high school could double as pool locker rooms as well. So there were a number of advantages that were discussed of having it at the high school versus the junior high, and certainly more so than at any of the other buildings in the district.
So I would find details on the rest, like the comment on...
Yeah, that full link will be there.
Thank you.
Anything else? Terry, Mike, Mary? There's, there's a lot of info, yeah. Again, the lengthy report with all the appendices, but again, a, a process for the board of ed to determine what are the next steps we want to take with regard to this report and the recommendations included in it. And that's, that's not going to be one discussion.
I think the committee did a great job.
Yes, absolutely.
I want to thank you for all your hard work. One question I had, so for the swim...
I'm not an expert on swimming, but my understanding is, is that most districts have six lane pools that have swim programs. As I mentioned, there are a few that have eight lane pools, but I'm going to leave the answer to the people that know more about swimming competitions than I do.
Well, if there's some rules regarding competition of what's required to host a competition?
If there is, I can't answer that. And I'm not sure that that came out in the discussion. But that's a good question to, obviously, to ask as you continue down the road of exploring this.
No, no. That's, that's Baldwin's rule, and you can't, you can't hold me. Mike, Aaron, or George, anything? Again, I want to thank Bill, I want to thank the committee, I want to thank everybody else who came, each of the other meetings, tonight, to show your support behind this idea, this concept. We're going to talk about it in open sessions over the next several meetings, there will be chairs set up for those as well. And anything that you, again, want to present to us at that point in those meetings, during the public discussion, we'll be glad to hear it. Also, Connie will accept emails that she will forward to us, because we seem to be getting a lot of emails for a lot of reasons, and Connie sends them right along. So, not just swimming pool reasons, the reasons too. But again, we appreciate everything you folks, it's been a lot of time on your part, a lot of effort, and again, we thank you very much, and to go from there. And that?
I just want to add also a thank you to the people on the committee. I know it was a lot of evenings to give up, it was for a good cause. I enjoyed being able to sit and watch the process. It was sometimes challenging to sit and watch, where some of us that were doing that aren't used to having that role, but I clearly understand why we were not part of the committee, and I think that was a wise recommendation from Bill, the facilitator. But again, I think you worked really well together, and we will, as Mr. Schuster said, the board will be talking further about this, and there will be opportunity for you to speak to it or send emails, and we look forward to where this process is going to take us. So thank you. And thank you, Bill.
And again, thanks to the board, thanks to the board for allowing me to assist with this. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Bill, thank you very much. We'll adjourn at 7:50.